All right, welcome everybody to the August meeting of the City of Franklin Planning Commission. Appreciate everybody being here. We will start our agenda tonight with the minutes of the meeting from our July meeting. If I can get a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Move to second. Any discussion about the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. The ayes have it. All right, ladies and gentlemen, the audience, this part of the agenda is an opportunity for you to speak directly to the commission on items that are not on the agenda tonight. You have comments you want to make to us, please approach the podium and let us know where you live and what your name is, and we'll listen to what you got to say. All right, we see none, then we'll move on to the announcements. Catherine.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to point out that we have a box outside for people to sign up to speak. We were going to try to do that because we had so much trouble getting names and addresses correct the last time. So anybody who would like to speak tonight, if you could sign up, and we will collect the box and give it to the chairman at the appropriate time.
Okay, where is that, just outside?
It's just outside on the table.
All right, great, thank you. Okay, are there any non-agenda items that staff is aware of? Okay, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Right now, consent agenda is listed as item seven, number seven, eight, thirteen through nineteen. Is there anyone in the audience, staff or commission, that would like to withdraw items from that consent agenda?
Number eighteen.
Number eighteen, okay. Any others? Okay, seeing none, then we'll take a motion.
Move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. The ayes have it. Then we'll move to item number nine, Resolution 2010-67, a resolution approving a regulating plan for the Franklin Housing Authority, Granbury and Strahl Street, I hope I pronounced that right, forty-nine units on 1.51 acres located at 145 Strahl Street by the City of Franklin, Tennessee. Stan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff recommends approval with conditions.
Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this item other than the applicant? And then the applicant can come right after that. Okay, it looks like there's none, none other than the applicant, so if the applicant can come forward and...
I'm Lemmy Arnold with Little John Engineering, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone in the commission might have in regards to the project.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Pearson?
I noticed here that it talked about the drainage and stormwater improvements. We have found recently that on infill, the drainage and stormwater has to be really looked at extremely carefully, and I know sometimes even after maybe construction is started, they've had to make some changes, so I'm just saying, please be very aware of that.
Yes, and we're working with engineering on that.
Right, right. Because it is kind of a small area, and a lot of it's paved, it's not built on.
All right, any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Item number ten, Resolution 2010-66, a resolution approving a regulating plan for Bree's Way subdivision, Section Three, a 118,992 square foot elementary school on 22.62 acres located at the northwest corner of Clovercroft Road in Bay Hill Circle by the City of Franklin.
Mr. Chairman, the rezoning and concept plan for this development were recently approved by BOMA. Staff recommends approval with conditions of the regulating plan.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this item? If so, I think the process is to go outside, do we need to go outside first or after they speak?
As long as they sign.
Okay, please, please sign at some point in time during the evening before we close. If you could come forward and still state your name and where you live, then maybe two times we'll catch it.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Dennis Gallagher. I live at 521 Federal Street in the Bree's Way subdivision. I have a question, concern regarding the amount of parking that is contained in the regulating plan, and whether or not that is deemed to be adequate for after-school events so as to avoid parking on the streets within the subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm Catherine Walsh, and I live at 111 Bay Hill Circle, and I have a concern about the detention pond, that it will be directly behind my house, because in Bay Hill, I have a detention pond directly in front of my house, so that my house is same, and a couple of other houses are sandwiched between these two ponds. And at one point, a comment was made that if the school's detention pond didn't, wasn't adequate, it would flow into the Bay Hill pond, and I don't know how it's supposed to get there.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else? Okay, is there someone here representing the applicant?
Enid Jarrell with Hudson Steel Engineering. Be glad to answer any questions, but first I might just go and address the two questions that the other folks had. The amount of parking provided is 139 spaces, automobile parking. There's also a bus parking lot that during events can accommodate 57 spaces. We have 196 spaces shown on, you know, for events after school and things like that. The school board has a model they've put together for their parking standards, and it's been adopted in a couple of different schools, and worked very well for 130 spaces of the same model. Looking at the ITE, the Industrial, the Institute of Traffic and Transportation Engineers, their recommendation for a school this size is 136 spaces. So we're more than the parking generation study that ITE recommends, and this model's worked well in the other schools the county has in the system like this. As far as the detention, there is a detention pond on the school property. It's a dry detention pond. It'll hold water for 24 hours during heavy rains. That water is diverted around the lots that are on Bay Hill into the large box culvert that goes to the pond, it's a wet pond in the semicircle there. And I'd be glad to answer any other questions that you may have.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Ms. Pearson?
Just to continue, because I want to ask them, just to continue your comments about the parking, this is not quite the location that you also might have in other circumstances. So I think some of the concern about the additional parking has been that the other roadways are not as conducive to overflow parking as we probably have in some other areas of our community. And so I think that that is one of the concerns, and I believe there has been some discussion about perhaps some school events being staggered, so maybe some parent-teacher conferences or something like that being staggered so that there would not, not everybody would be there at the same time, because I think that's the, that's the difficulty. It's when there are, you know, an after-school ceremony that might involve the entire school. So I'd like to hear some comments.
Yeah, I'm going to let Mr. Kevin Fortney address the times stack.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Kevin Fortney, Director of Operations, Facilities, and Construction for the district. The event periods that were discussed previously, generally those events when they occur, we don't bring the entire student body in at one time. If they do plays or whatever, they're generally grade-oriented, kindergarten through first or second grade. Open houses, for example, here in the next few weeks, we'll be doing that throughout the district, and those are scheduled at various times with first, second, and third grade, and then fourth and fifth grade. So we schedule those to adapt to the site. Additionally, I wanted to talk about all of the overflow parking, as we call it, during those events. We have in excess of 2,400 feet of stacking available on the site, so we've got circular roads that come all the way down around the site, and we can use one lane of those and still maintain ingress egress on the site, so that will take up quite a few cars. I don't have the exact, can figure 12 feet per car, 15 foot per car at 2,400 feet, and get an idea that we could stack another within the site and without having to go onto the subdivision. So we always encourage parking on our site and not within the neighborhood, and we can do our best to control that. Any other questions, I'd be glad to answer.
And someone mentioned to me that that might be an opportunity to ask people to carpool if they could.
Oh, sure. I mean, we would encourage that.
Right, right.
And this is K through?
This is K through five.
K through five, so there'll be no basketball games or football games.
That's right.
Which is really, when you look at a school site, is when really you have the most parking.
Exactly.
Right. We also, please know that there are no athletic fields.
Right, okay.
Okay, it's all playground, and it's all confined to one side of the site. So the buffers are maintained, the playgrounds are isolated and fenced, so it's, although it's a community school for Williamson County Schools, you know, we do try to restrict access to some areas.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Would you mind just a quick overview of the off-site roadway improvements that are planned to parallel this development?
I think we probably want to take that up at site plan.
Okay.
If I may, I can just give you a real quick overview that our entrances are aligned with the Chardonnay entrance, okay? Our primary focus of entrance is to be at the main entrance at Chardonnay for both buses. Buses go on to the west side of the property, automobiles go to the east side, and around the east side and around the north side of the property, and it loops all the way around. I believe you have a site plan that shows a traffic pattern of the roads for automobiles and those that separate for buses.
All right, any other comments? All right, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. The ayes have it. Item number 11, Resolution 2010-65, a resolution approving a regulating plan for Creekstone Commons PUD subdivision, 124 units on 51.09 acres located along the Creekstone Boulevard by the City of Franklin.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant is asking for a modification of standards to allow front-entry garages more than 20 feet, or less than 20 feet from the front facade. Staff is asking that the planning commission consider this and disapprove this because this particular standard was the subject of quite a bit of discussion at one time. The standard was placed in the zoning ordinance to protect the quality of housing in the City of Franklin, and we believe that this particular development does not need this standard in order to meet their criteria. The planning commission is not charged with making sure they, you know, what their financial situation is. The planning commission is charged with looking at the quality of the City of Franklin, and we believe that this modification of standards would be detrimental to that. And I would ask Emily to continue this discussion.
Mr. Chairman, staff is recommending that this regulating plan be approved with conditions. As our director has previously stated, the applicant is requesting a modification of standards, and staff is recommending that planning commission deny the applicant's request to reduce the standard that requires that street-facing garages be located at a minimum of 20 feet behind the home's front facade to a minimum of one foot behind any prominent architectural feature. Staff recommends disapproval of the modification of standards request due to the effect that the prominent street-facing garages would have not only in aesthetic value of the subdivision, but also to the City of Franklin as well. While this site does have some significant environmental and topographic constraints, the site can be designed in a manner that meets all of the requirements of the Franklin zoning ordinance. I'd really like to kind of talk about this section of the zoning ordinance that outlines the procedure by which planning commission may grant design modifications. The planning commission shall not grant a design modification unless it is found that the applicant has presented sufficient justification and documentation that all four of the following facts apply to the request. First, the design modification will not be detrimental to the public safety, health, or welfare, or injurious to other property or improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located. Second, the conditions upon which the request is based are unique to the design intent for the development, which the design modifications are sought and are not applicable generally to other property. The design modification is necessary because of the particular design intent of the development which would not be achievable if strict adherence to these requirements were carried out. And finally, the design modification will not vary the provisions of the Franklin Land Use Plan. Staff has provided in your packet a summary of our comments regarding all four of these criteria, and staff review has found that none of these findings are supported by the applicant's request. Basically, if you've read through your packets, we, staff has conducted a survey of properties adjacent to Creekstone Commons. We found that the majority of homes which are shown in green actually had side or rear-loaded garages, and the ones that are shown in yellow had front-loaded garages that were set back beyond the front facade of the home. Not necessarily 20 feet beyond the front facade, but were set back. And finally, the red indicates where the garages were located in front of the front facade or flush with the front facade.
So this is the map that's being projected right here. Creekstone Commons is just under where garage standards, the developed area, so this is kind of the built-out residential area that's closest to this proposed development.
Also in your packet, you will find photos of street-facing garages in Franklin neighborhoods. Not only do these garages diminish the aesthetic value of the community, but the traffic flow and parking are also affected when residents use the garages primarily for storage and park in the driveways and on streets that have not been designed to accommodate parking. The top photos in that section of your packet are examples where traffic flow and parking have been impacted, and then the bottom photos are some local examples of street-facing garages that are somewhat set back from the front of the home where there is adequate room for parking. Some other points we'd just like to go through quickly. The second finding required is that the request is unique to the development and that the design modification is not applicable generally to other property. The applicant has argued that site work has already begun on this property and that there's infrastructure already in place. However, we would also like to point out that there is a, an approved concept plan already in place for this development that meets all the design standards of the zoning ordinance. Also, there are existing neighborhoods in Franklin where topography and existing site constraints have been an issue, and they have used other methods to adapt to the property and still meet the design requirements of the zoning ordinance. Some of these subdivisions include Richards Glen, West Haven, and McKay's Mill. The last finding I'd like to talk about is in regards to the Franklin Land Use Plan. Kind of went through a summary in your packet, but I would really like to point out that the land use plan recognizes that there are many areas of the city where the suburban form of development has progressed to the point that the character of the area is committed, and the best strategy is to complete development with the same pattern and character while making incremental improvements to better integrate subdivisions with each other and the city as a whole. Based upon the survey that staff conducted, we would argue that granting a modification of standards to allow the entire subdivision to have street-facing garages that were located a minimum of a one foot behind a prominent, a prominent primary feature such as a porch is not making similar design patterns or character of existing neighborhoods, and it's definitely not making incremental improvements to the site plan. And finally, if you'll just read through in your packet, we have summarized all the reasons that staff would not recommend allowing this modification of design standards to go forward, and I would like you just to read through those before you make your decision.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to this item that's not the applicant? Mr. Mayor, I don't think you're the applicant.
I'm not the applicant. Glad I'm not the applicant, as a matter of fact. I'm John Schorr. I live at 512 Boyd Mill Avenue, and I would like to address this issue, and I would like to respectfully disagree with staff on every one of their recommendations. And I have, they have given you countless reasons why you should turn it down. I will give you reasons why you should not turn it down. I believe this is an important decision by the planning commission. I believe it needs to be considered a lot and heavily, and it may have some long-term implications, and I may mention that as we go along, but bear with me if you would. And I also have some pictures, and I will present them as well. I challenged staff, I said, you better make sure that they work because... Because if not, I'm going to accuse you of trying to sabotage my presentation. But I know that wouldn't be the case. Before I go into some pictures, I would just like to address actually the four comments regarding the findings and how I disagreed with them as well. The first one is the design modification will not be detrimental to the public safety, health, or welfare, or injurious to other property improvements in the neighborhood in which the property is located. I believe we do need to consider health, safety, and welfare. It's one of our requirements, and I see in no way that the change of these modifications to standards is, has effect to the health, safety, and welfare. And they go into talk about other subdivisions within the area, and I'm going to mention that a little bit later. But the first thing they said is Roderick Square abuts Creekside Commons. Roderick Square does not abut the Creekside Commons. They're near a Creekstone Development. They're near, but they do not abut. But there are many other areas within this Forest Crossing Riverside, and we're going to talk a little bit of that later, that do abut it and are very similar. In fact, you saw pictures, while not all of those homes have front-loaded garages, a majority of them, and it is important to remember that. Secondly, the conditions upon which the request is based are unique to the design intent for the development, which the design modifications are sought and are not applicable generally to other property. I think this is a very unique situation, very unique topographically, and it does have some huge constraints, and there is a fact that there is infrastructure there that has an impact on this development. And one of the subdivisions that they mentioned that dealt with topographical issues is McKay's Mill. But if you drove through McKay's Mill, you will see that in areas where there are unique topographical issues, they have front-loaded garages. There'll be a picture of a home here that has front-loaded garages. They dealt with the topographical issues by having front-loaded garages. That was the only way they could do it. This is a very similar situation. Item number three, the design modification is necessary because of the particular design intent of the development which not be achievable if strict adherence to these requirements was carried out. And staff says, again, as staff has previously stated, there are alternatives for the development of this site that meets the standards of the zoning ordinance. Staff contends the following list of options should be considered by the applicant, but let me outline a few things, just briefly. Basements, they mentioned basements. You could add basements. You could add retaining walls. You could lower the overall density. But what does that do when you do that? It adds costs to the house. I have a friend of mine who used to say, you can add, you can solve any problem, all you have to do is add money and stir. But we have an issue here with affordable housing and the cost of these homes, and this is an issue that the city has been dealing with, that I, in my administration, has worked with from the very beginning in trying to add more affordable homes to the city. Now, this is not categorized as a quote-unquote affordable home, but it is a house that has a moderate price range that will be available for people as first-time homebuyers, and they need to have options in this city. And by adding retaining walls, by adding garages, by lowering density, you will add cost to the homes, which will make this home a lot more expensive to the ultimate buyer. Finally, the design modification will not vary the provisions of the Franklin Land Use Plan. I will certainly beg to differ with that. This is in a McEwen character overlay area, and there are several subdivisions in this character area, and let me read them to you. Forest Crossing, Countrywood Estates, Riverview, Liberty Hills, Andover, Cheswick Farms, Golden Metals, Amber Glen, Falcon Creek. I think those are the only subdivision in this character area. Every one of those subdivisions have front-loaded garages. Some as many as 90 percent. Now, not all of them, but they certainly do. The other important thing is, I think you should consider, is the applicant is lowering the density of this project from what has been approved, no doubt that it has been approved and could be built that way, of 263 units down to 124 units. That really has an impact on our city, and I think is an important consideration. But I would ask for you to turn your attention to these homes, and these are, these are some pictures that I've taken today, and maybe a couple days ago, and I hope this works. These are pictures of homes, and some of the subdivisions have front-loaded garages. And these are the homes that we now decide are not attractive enough to be built in this city. We think that they have an aesthetic devaluing of the properties within the City of Franklin. These are typical homes in Polk Place and Countrywood and different areas, and I'm going to show you a couple things. Nothing spectacular, but there were pictures on the other side. This is an area of just east on, or west on Highway 96. This is for elderly housing, and it's one of the few places in the city that there's opportunity for elderly housing, and they have front-loaded garages. This home was in Philstone Farms, I took this picture this morning. It's the same sort of concept. It is smaller, has front-loaded garages, and is for elderly or, and very moderately-priced homes. Very attractive, they've done a great job with that. This is one of those ugly streets that have front-loaded garages. Look how hideous that is, and how aesthetically it would impact the value of the City of Franklin and those residents. Every home on that street has a front-loaded garage. This is another home that's in Moore's Landing, front-loaded garage, new development, again, very attractive. That is that street, one of those streets that have front-loaded garages. They have some parking on the side, but the majority of that area is not designated for off-street parking. This is what the residents of Riverview look at on the way to Creekstone. That's what's there today. Lovely view, and this, and this is what I think is really important, are the homes that truly do abut Creekstone. This is, there's about eight homes, their backyards are on Creekstone. This is what that road looks like. Every single one of those homes has a front-loaded garage. So it's hard for me to understand that you're going to change the character of the neighborhood when every home that abuts the development has a front-loaded garage. That's what those people look at today out of their backyards. That's what they see. This, by the way, is one of the homes that is allowed in the city that has a side-loaded garage, and I will beg to differ, I beg to argue with it, this home is more attractive than that home. I do not see where these homes that we're showing affect the aesthetic value and character of the City of Franklin. And finally, I would like to say that there's a core to this issue, and it's a core that I mentioned earlier, but I'm very concerned about, and it has to do with the diverse product that we as a city can provide to our residents. We've worked hard to have different types of homes in this city. We've worked hard to have affordable homes in this city, but by our zoning ordinance, we are moving away from that. We are telling people that if you have a front-loaded garage and that's all you can afford, we don't want you to live in this city. We want you to be able to afford a more expensive home. And you're also telling the person who lives in this home, that person today, that their house is not nice enough to be built in the City of Franklin today. I think that is an arrogance that's beyond... I think that is an arrogance that's beyond statement. I cannot believe that we as a city are doing that. And yes, there's a possibility that we might set precedent if we change this modification to standard. But personally, I think that might be a precedent ought to be set. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, is there anyone, someone representing the applicant?
Natural applicant, does that work?
It works for me.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission. Alan Thompson with Reagan Smith and Associates do have a brief presentation to present this project and our stance on this modification of standard. If you'd bear with us, we'd appreciate it. Also have Mr. Glenn McGee here as a representative to Pulte Homes as well, and he'll speak immediately after me. Is it okay if I'm just out in front?
You might turn that microphone around so we can actually hear your voice on, to the worldwide audience that's watching at home.
People do that.
I know.
I guess that's the best we can do right there.
That's as far as it will go.
All right. Anyway, this is where the project's located. This is South Royola Boulevard here, Riverview Park, neighborhood immediately to our south here. As you can see, the site, which is 51.09 acres, about 40 to 45% of that site is currently developed, as you see here. That's currently the way it stands in the field now. All right, thank you. This is the existing condition. As you drive into the main entrance right here, the first thing that you're seeing at the top of the hill here is this stockpile that's currently left by the previous developer. You've got roughly 20,000 cubic yards of material that's sitting there. The site is roughly stabilized with some grass and some sediment control, as you can see. You have two townhomes and three single homes that have been built. None of them are occupied. They're basically vacant and boarded up. This gives you examples of them here. These particular ones do not have any veneer on the outside. So you have a situation, looking at the modification of standard, and one was the public safety, health, and welfare. We argue that exact opposite. We feel like coming in and stabilizing this project and fixing these conditions is going to better the situation for the public safety, health, and welfare. Because I think the current state of the site sets up some real issues for kids or anyone else that goes into these areas and play. You've got some dangerous situations. But that's the existing status of the site. And I want to touch briefly on the plan that was referenced earlier, as there is a current plan that will work with this site and meet the standards. We don't necessarily disagree with that, and we can understand where staff is coming from on their stance with the modification of standard. However, in looking at the existing plan, there are 113 single-family lots, there are 108 condominium flats, and there are 45 townhomes. Total of 263 units on this particular plan. There's 6,000 linear feet of roadway. There's about 3,600 linear feet of alley. The impervious area on this site is 18.4 acres, which is roughly 36% of the site. So where do we go from this plan to our plan? And that's what we want to look at here. All right, this is the plan we're proposing today. We're only proposing 124 units. So we are reducing the density by about 138 lots, or 53%, a substantial reduction in density. We are also eliminating the impervious areas from the alleys, and we have 6,800 linear feet of roadway. However, our total overall impervious area is 13.4 acres, five acres less than what you're looking at in the previous plan. So why the modification of standard? Why is this project unique? Why do we need this modification of standard in order to make this project work? Back in the spring, Pulte Homes came to our firms, saying, "We need to reevaluate this. We need to relook at this." They've looked at a, they've done a very thorough market study of what can actually work today in this market. Glenn McGee will speak to that immediately after me. So why do we need this in order to make this plan work is the question I'd like to answer. There's 124 total units, which I've mentioned. Every one of those units are critical to making this plan work. I think it was suggested that we could add basement lots, and we could add retaining walls and make this project work. Well, we have added those. And that's your cross-section E, as you see right there. This is that cross-section that we're looking at. This is your big stockpile of 20,000 cubic yards up here. And you can see the existing elevation as it goes down the hill. In order to make this particular product work, to set up the streetscapes that we desire, to have that aesthetic appeal and that functioning appeal for the community that Pulte wants, we have to address it from a grade fashion from what you're looking. Do we have retaining walls? Absolutely. At the bottom of the hill, we have two 8-foot retaining walls per the city of Franklin's requirements. Throughout the rest of the site, we have approximately 3,200 linear feet of retaining walls. So we have retaining walls. There's substantial site work that's going to have to be done in order to stabilize this site and make it developable and create that overall community feel, that overall neighborhood and marketable lifestyle that Pulte is looking for. Do we have basements? Absolutely. You'll see on the lower side, basement lots coming off here. We have a substantial grade change of almost 100 feet from this elevation to the bottom of our wall. So to make that work from a design standpoint, we have to go through some pretty stringent site grading. This gives you an idea of the type of material we'll be moving on site, the blue being filled, the red being cut. There's going to be approximately 200,000-plus cubic yards that's going to have to be moved on this particular site in order to make this plan work. So I mention that because the whole modification of standard and how it impacts us comes back to the depths of the houses. The depths of the houses and the garages are critical. If those garages move back 20 foot from the facade, well, the depth of our house has just gotten deeper. With that, we create a more stringent grading situation in the backyards. On the backside of the basements, we create a much more stringent grading situation by moving that. And then we're replacing, from a marketable standpoint, we're replacing that 20-foot of area that was in the backyard, which is very desirable from our respective buyers. We're replacing that with 20-foot of driveway. So in our opinion, our preference would be to keep it there. But just from general site constraints, we didn't want to shorten our backyards, add a substantial and additional cost in putting retaining walls in our backyards, and then end up with a very small, not-so-attractive, not-real, livable-type backyard. Because we feel like the product of the house itself is one thing, but you're also purchasing that overall community, you're purchasing that lifestyle. All right, just to give you an example, this is the type of product that we're looking at. This is example homes. Yes, it is front-loaded. The porches will protrude out. They'll be the farthest located portion of that facade that protrudes out. We will have carriage-style garage doors, so we'll have very much upgraded garage doors. We will meet every architectural element of the city's requirements, with the exception of the one modification of standard we're looking for. And that's what makes this a very unique site, that one modification of the garage door, mainly from site constraints. When we make that adjustment, a substantial constraint comes into our backyards and our living space, and a large dollar in cost comes with that. When we start adding that large dollar in cost, we start getting outside of our market. And Glenn McGee, again, will speak further on our market. I think that the mayor spoke to this earlier. This is the neighborhood, more of a bird's-eye view. This is Stonegate Drive. They're immediately next to us. And far as being consistent with the land use plan, we're in Character 5. Character 6 immediately abuts us. I think staff made a valid comment that Character 6 says that surrounding character areas should reflect similar architecture as well. But we are 100% consistent with Character Land Use Area 5, the McEwen Character Area 5 area. And one thing I want to point out, the lots that are immediately next to our development, the ones that would have the biggest impact on our development, much like the mayor had brought up earlier, you can see there's approximately 17 homes down through there. 14 of those 17 are front-loaded homes. Nothing wrong with these homes, very nice homes. This gives you an example of those homes. The reason we want to bring this up is we are consistent with our immediate neighboring sites. We do have a consistency there. And we feel like this modification of standard is justified from the land use standpoint. It's very unique. This is a very unique property because of the site constraints, because the 45% of it's already developed, and because we can come in, we can stabilize this site, and reduce our density by 53%. It's a very unique situation. And again, I guess this is a little different day, but I think I parked in the same spot the mayor's parked in. This is what they're looking at from Riverview Park right now. Basically, you've got closed-off public roadways that eventually will come in, will be able to stabilize this, will get that infrastructure back opened up, and you're looking at a giant stockpile. This is something that we can come in, Pulte Homes can come in and stabilize this and be a solution for this particular property. I think I've addressed pretty much all that we talked about. Is this necessary? This modification necessary for our design? Absolutely. It's critical in how this property is viewed from a marketability standpoint, how it's structurally laid out, and how it impacts our overall market value. Are these unique conditions? Absolutely. 45% of the site's already developed. We have extreme hard site constraints in topo, and we're reducing this by 53%, reducing the overall density. Is this a detriment to public safety, health, and welfare? Absolutely not. It's a garage door. We feel like it's an aesthetic issue. We're going to come in, we're going to stabilize this site, we're going to make the public safety, health, risk better than what it currently stands today. And land use plan, I think we're 100% compliant in the McEwen area, Character Area 5, and I think we reflect those areas around us as well. Having said that, I'm going to let Glenn McGee.
Hello, I'm Glenn McGee. I live at 475 Whistler Cove, Franklin, Tennessee. I would also thank the commission for giving us this opportunity to present to you Creeksone. It's a, it's a development that we're excited about, gives us an opportunity as Pulte to be back in the Franklin community, and that's something we really look forward to. Just to give you a brief introduction of the Pulte Group. The Pulte Group is located, is a nationwide company, and we have a Nashville division. It's actually their local corporate office is located in Franklin, Tennessee. We've got 55 employees within that building, and then we certainly have people out in the field as well. Operate three different product lines. We bought Syntex Homes over a year ago, and Syntex Homes is really for that first-time homebuyer. It's that value-oriented, it's that value-oriented family buyer that's typically buying the Syntex home. Today, we don't have any Syntex home, development home within the city of Franklin. Pulte, Pulte is our, really our move-up buyer. It's that buyer that's, it's a family buyer that's really looking for a little more elegance, a little higher price point, and that's the Pulte product. And that's the product that we are proposing today to go on this site, is the Pulte brand. And then also, we have our Del Webb product, which is an age-targeted, age-restricted development, 55-plus, all-inclusive for an active lifestyle. Those are quite large developments. And we have one of those that we're very proud of at Lake Province, out in the Mount Juliet area. But we're talking about the Pulte product on this. Just to, just to give you a brief history about Creeksone. Creeksone was approved over three years ago almost, in 2007, for 263 units to go on this site. And it was a mixed-use development. It had alley-loaded homes on the site, it had front-loaded detached homes on the site, it had alley-loaded townhomes, attached townhomes on the site, and then it had stacked flats. It had four-level stacked flats with garage or basement parking, if you will. All of that to go on this site. Now, the one thing you do is, when you're looking at a site like this and you look at the price that that developer paid for the site, he's trying to get as much density on there as he can to make his pro forma work for himself and his bank. But unfortunately, what happened to this, as he was looking at this particular product, his townhomes were priced in the high 300s to the low 400s for 1,600 square feet. Stacked flats started at 339 for 1,400 square feet. His single-family detached homes started at 410 and went all the way up to almost $700,000 and 3,600 square feet. Was not accepted, that price point was not something that was accepted in this marketplace. He had a home for sale here that never could sell. And ultimately, what happened, this project was closed on. And today, the bank owns it. The bank bought this project back. So what happened was, the bank hired a third-party, out-of-state consultant to come in and stabilize the site. As staff knows, there was several issues on the site that had to be dealt with. They came in, made their attempts to do that, and at the meantime, as well as, started looking for folks out there that were developers, as well as end-users, to come in and take over this project, that being the bank and its third-party consultant. They approached Pulte and knew that the Pulte had the makeup to make this happen, said, "Is this something you would consider doing?" We were working on another project that we ultimately closed on in the same marketplace that was a distressed asset. And instead of immediately putting this under contract, we started spending money on due diligence. We went out to the site, did our own independent geo-studies out there, because as staff has mentioned, there were some issues with geo out there, as well as environmental. And so before we would ever put it under contract, we wanted to know what we were getting into. And we got comfortable with that, ultimately settled on a contract with the bank, and today, we have it under contract. We do not own this site. So, you know, the one thing that we feel like at Pulte is, is we have the expertise to do what we're talking about in turning around a distressed asset. As I said, we closed in January on an asset in Brentwood on Edmondson Pike called Wetstone, which is a luxury home development. It had, it has 136 lots. There was four homes already built in there and two of those occupied. A lot of challenges with that site, just like this one, where we've come in and had to make those changes. We feel like that, as Pulte, that we have a comprehensive solution to coming in and looking at a project like this. And first and foremost, as we all hear every day on the radio and TV and newspapers, is you've got to have the money to be able to pull something like this off. You've got to have the ability to close. This is not a cheap asset today. The bank is not giving it away. So we still have to pay for it. So you've got to be able to close it, and then you've got to be able to take the risk. Not in the future development of being able to sell houses, but what's under the ground right here. We've got some challenges with this. 40% of the site is developed. We'd been much better off if the site was totally raw and we could start from scratch. But they pretty much took the best part of the site, piled everything up here, and was going to sell this as fast as they could, obviously to bring the basis or cost down in the project. So you've got to have the ability to close. Another part of having the ability to close or having the finances to pull this off is on the bonds. Bonds are a big issue. The project we just took over in Williamson County, i.e. Brentwood, we bought, in the first phases, we essentially bought the lots. The bond stayed with the current bondholder, which today was the bank. And the city of Brentwood's tried to call those bonds, they're having, they're struggling with that. So it's a big issue. The bank asked us and pretty much said, "If we're going to take on this contract, we have to take over the bonds." Which to me, I think that would be encouraging to the city. So all of a sudden, if this bank, like many banks are doing, goes under or something like that, it doesn't become a burden of the city. So having the, you know, financial capabilities to take over the bonds, as well as take over the development, is extremely important. The plan, you know, one thing that makes you nervous when you look at an asset like this, which is really, it's a community, it's a neighborhood, is you've got to have the kind of plan that will work. Today, this is a dead community. It's a totally dead community. And it's somewhat been branded and has the reputation of a failure. And so you've got to be able to come back in and put the money into this site immediately, on your front door, what it looks like from the street, all the way through, your amenities, everything, from day one. Because you've got to brand this as a viable community that's going to live well. So that's, that's what we anticipate doing day one. As you saw on the plans... As you saw in the plans, we have significant green areas, a lot of nice amenities to this entire site. So you've got to be able to do that day one, in rebranding that, to let people know, this community is a viable community, and we can sell houses here. You know, the next thing about the plan is, well, there's certainly risk, and that's a negative, but the real positive to this, in our mind, which becomes a challenge every time you do this, is, is we don't have anybody living in this community. We've taken over other communities over the last year, and there's people living in there, whereas the developer or the home seller made certain promises that couldn't be kept on the backside. And the nice thing is today, is there's nobody living in this community. So we see that as a real positive. We feel like that's a real positive for the city as well. Next is the product. You know, we talked about 263 units on this and the price point they were at. At the height of this market, in 2007, at the height of the market, in a sub-market that we're going to call Centennial High School, the average price point selling of a home was $329,000, or 2,572 square feet. That's at the height of the market. Today, last 12 months, it's 278, or 2,450 square feet, $113 per square foot. Where we're talking about coming in at price point is from the 300s to the 375s, we're essentially going to be at $118 price point. So we're going to be at what we feel like the market will absorb our product and our price point, which is extremely important. I think what's important to the commission would be, is that we don't get a few years down the road, and all of a sudden, a community becomes abandoned, or whatever the case may be, but we have the ability to continue. We have to make plans today. Unlike we did in several years ago, where developers and builders out there were saying, "Well, we can buy at this price, because one day it's going to be here." I think we have to be, we have to be realistic, knowing that three years from now may not be any different from today, and it just might be worse. So when we start thinking about the product that will fit here, the price point that will sell here, it's very much in part of the plan, and I think it has to be a part of the commission's mind when they think about, "How do I correct the problem that currently exists out there?" And finally, at Polte, we're very proud of our team. We've got a team in place that's been here for quite some time, that's made up of people from this marketplace in this area. And they're very proud of what they do, and they want to put something on the ground that lives well. They're excited about having the ability to close on things. We, as a team, are very excited to know that our company has the money, that we can stay in business and we can keep our jobs. So that's very important. Secondly, is we're very comfortable with the plan, knowing that we can execute that plan and deliver and do exactly what we say we can do. And we've got great products. I think, most recent product, project we did in Franklin, was the Garden Club, out off McEwen. And I would challenge each of you to drive through there, and I think that each of us as a community of Franklin could say that it's a community we're proud of. Very, very nice community, and we're very proud of Polte and the Polte brand. And like I said, we feel like we have a team that's second to none. You know, I would respectfully ask the commission to approve this plan, as well as the modification of standard. Be open to any questions.
All right, thank you. All right, is there a motion on the floor?
Move for approval.
Second. Is that with, as proposed by the staff?
No.
I'll make amendment to the motion. I'd like to grant the modification of standards by changing number one to read modification of standards to allow street-facing garages that are located a minimum of one foot behind any prominent feature of the home's facade.
Okay, is it proper to, for that to be the main motion, since we really didn't have a vote on the main motion?
We've got a vote of second.
I'm sorry, there is a second. So that's a proper amendment. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Okay. All right, moved and seconded. Discussion, I'd like to kind of start first, and just discuss a little bit about my feelings on this individually, and watch you guys speak. I guess I have a little more of an interest being on the development side, as well as being an architect. I think there's a lot of good things about this project, the fact that we've got an interested developer who has a track record and is interested in developing what appears to be a good project overall. It's great that we're considering affordability. I think that's obviously an important issue across the city, that's been a longstanding problem and concern for a lot of us who have kids and want them to be able to afford to live here. I know having, and you've been a part of this as well, having a lot of these discussions in the zoning ordinance, we've had a lot of time that we've discussed this issue amongst others. As a commission, we're not only dealing with planning issues, but we're also dealing with aesthetic issues, as Chapter 5 in the zoning ordinance portrays. We've had a lot of discussions about various things that are really purely aesthetic, but since we are the planning commission and there is not a design commission in the city, that's usually one of the tasks we take. So the concern that I have with, I mean, I'll back up to say that generally, I think this is a good project from the planning perspective and the concept of what you guys are trying to do. I think my heartburn or concern comes in, are taking lightly to a certain degree, and not necessarily, but taking lightly some of the past discussions we've had. And I know it's easy, in reaction to comments that have been made, to swing the pendulum from one extreme to another. And I would just caution us as a commission to not, to not do that, to consider, there may be a middle ground, there may be an alternative that deals with this issue, but maybe not as severely as one foot behind a porch element or that sort of thing. I also recognize that the world's a different place right now economically. We're in a different position, and we need to be considering alternatives that provide opportunities for everyone. So it's a hard issue. I agree with what the mayor said. I think it is a precedent-setting issue that we need to consider as well, and then I know that there'll be others in line behind this developer asking for the same thing, probably not with the same issues of grade, but just asking for that same consideration. So I would say, let's consider that in our comments and discussions as well.
I have a couple of thoughts on this. I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but this particular character area does allow for both traditional development and conventional, yes. And that front-loaded garages are permitted in conventional subdivision development. And that the argument or the discussion here is whether the garage is 20 feet back or one foot back. And in reading the discussion from staff, I was looking for specific direction as to, really, why 20 feet? Why five feet? Why 10 feet? Why one foot? And the discussion here is geared more toward front-loaded garages, which are permitted in our zoning in conventional subdivisions. What we're talking about is a design decision, so long as there is still really 20 feet between the front garage door and the sidewalk. And is that possible still on this plan? The front yard setbacks within this particular zoning or underlying zoning still would accommodate additional cars parked in that driveway, under the scenario that the applicant has proposed. So there won't be car overhangs into the sidewalk. Bicycles and pedestrians can still move along those roads sufficiently. From that standpoint, if this is a particular design decision, and the applicant, as you did mention, that all of these garage doors would be carriage-style garage doors, I would like to add to the motion, that particular fact, that these would be carriage-style design doors, so that at least the level of the character of these doors is enhanced.
One thing I've got to say before I explode over here, whereas $300,000 to $375,000 may be affordable to some of you, let's not throw around that word on this project. It really irks me. It's not affordable, as far as I'm concerned, not what we're looking for when we talk about affordable housing in the city of Franklin. Back to the other we're talking about, the reason that staff has made these points is because that is the standard. Now, if we don't want that to be the standard, that's one thing, but it is the standard. In my neighborhood, where most houses, it's an old neighborhood, older neighborhood, we don't even have garages for the most part, what am I, there's a piece of property we sold up the street, they had to spend thousands of extra dollars to meet this standard, okay? There is another house that's getting ready to be built that has to do the same. So I'm going to have a problem with us just blanketly granting 124 houses a modification of standard. So if that's the case, and if that's a problem, let's just get rid of the standard. I will not be voting for this. I don't like it. It stinks. It's going to, it's going to reek, guys. And I think we better have a little more, we better have a little more justification than what we've been given to do this. Now, if it's a problem, let's take a look at the standard itself, if we feel that that's a big enough standard. But I don't see this, it's going, in my opinion, it's going to look like we did a favor for someone, or we did it for these guys. Well, if that's the case, the next time it comes in here, we better grant it again. So if the standard's a problem, let's change the standard. I just don't see us picking and choosing who has to abide by the standard. And whereas I understand, I know this property's sitting there, and times are hard as far as construction, you know, my dad does some construction on the side and all of that. Well, you know, we just got crazy a few years ago. Hey, we bought everything and start building million-dollar houses. But I just don't think that we, as a commission, I think we really, we need to be careful about this. I really, really do. Have nothing against, as a matter of fact, I live in either one of those houses tomorrow, if I could. But do we, as a commission, want to do this for, you know, just blanket, blanket do that? If the standard's a problem, I wouldn't mind taking a look at the standard.
I have a couple of things to say. One of them is that the topography here is different from many others.
That makes it, that makes it, that makes it more difficult to fit things in. In fact, whenever I spoke with some people about it, I said, "It almost looks as if every lot would need to have a building envelope on it to make sure that it could be built," you know, "because of the grade and everything there." I mean, it was that, that was as big a concern to me. I appreciate a couple of comments that have already been made, the one that we don't want to do something just for one situation and not carry it over to another. I think this does open up some of the ideas that we have had, because as the staff well made their recommendations, they are following what is the zoning ordinance right now. And I'm also mindful of our chairman stating that some of those things on aesthetics were hard-fought, and they absolutely, we would regret losing a lot of the things that have been hard-fought decisions. I am, I'm not, I have mixed feelings about the front-loaded garages. I personally don't care for them, you know, myself, but the cost does go into some of I probably, I suppose that after hearing the comments already, I will probably, I mean, I will support the modification of standards, but I do it reluctantly because of some of the comments that have been made. I do not think we need to set a precedent unless we want to go back and open up this issue again. And again, there are some very good reasons for that. And as I say, it is our rule right now. But I do think that this particular area does have some constraints on it that others do not have.
Just to echo that, I think I too would like to go back and revisit the zoning ordinance and see, take a look at it, and see if there are some changes that should be made into it.
I think that when the zoning ordinance was crafted, that there's a specific tool that was added, which allows for design standards to be modified. This is one of those cases. And has the precedence for those garages been set within this particular neighborhood, community, or character area already, and they're already complying with it? To me, the issue is not whether it's, the house is accessed from the front of the street or the side of the home, because in a conventional subdivision, which is a set, is a design standards criteria within our zoning ordinance, it's permitted. Is the garage door one foot behind the porch or the front facade of the house, or is it 20 feet back? And it's not, to me, it's not about is there, can you access the home from the front? Because that is permitted, and that is a part of the design standards currently. And I believe that this particular site has hardships that can be, really only be addressed by reducing where that garage sits from the front elevation. And I think that it is unique, absolutely unique.
All right, any other comments?
Yeah, just to follow up. I think when we visited this at the time that the standard was set, there was, there were a number of subdivisions, probably lower price point subdivisions that were being built with what we all laughingly refer to as snout houses.
Yes, yes.
With large garages that extended beyond the front facade of the house, and extended halfway down the drive, what would have been the driveway if the garage had been set back. And I don't think anybody would argue that that was something that wasn't conducive to the standard that we feel is important in Franklin. But it sounds, though, that we're in a discussion about whether, you know, if a front-loaded garage is permissible 20 feet back, and now we're debating whether one foot is okay, that there's a huge gap between those distances. And I'd be in favor of revisiting the standard as well, because I think too, that the site constraints on this, on this property lend themselves to a special treatment and not precedent-setting modifications to standards.
I definitely want to see us revisit this. If we're good, I mean, because, you know, we're all, we're all, tonight, we're kind of all, you know, we need to revisit this, though, for the rest of, for the rest of the city, not just for this site, because if that's the point, then nobody in my neighborhood should have to do that either. They really shouldn't have to do it. So we just need to make sure that, you know, I have a problem a lot of times, a lot of aesthetics anyway, because beauty isn't an eye of the beholder. But if we're going to, if we're going to maintain this, we definitely need to make sure we're doing it, you know, we're doing it right.
That was going to be one of my comments.
Go ahead.
That was going to be one of my comments as well. When this issue came before us before many years ago, it was, I mean, it made national news, headlines, and, I mean, it was discussed over and over, and we did come to that decision. But times have changed, economic times are different, and I agree with everybody on the board that we really need to revisit this. And I feel like this particular project warrants the modification of standards, just because times have changed. And we have to really seriously look at the things and look at our economy and how things are now. And we don't need to set a precedent that it's not a good thing, but we do see now that as times are changing, that there may be things like this that we need to look at and revisit. So I will be supporting this modification. And as Marcia and Ann said, staff is doing what they're supposed to do, they have to follow the ordinance, so, but I'm going to support it.
Okay. All right.
I was just going to say two things. One of them's that people felt, at that time, felt very strongly that they wanted to maybe conceal the vehicle. That's the reason for the 20 feet. It wasn't just an arbitrary number. But I have to tell you something else, and I hope I won't offend most of the people who are here tonight, but when we were talking about that, and in fact, one of the things that's allowed is a standalone garage, you know, not attached to the house. And I was speaking to one of my friends about having a detached garage in a house, and she said, "A man must have designed that, because no woman would want to have the garage as a separate building." And I still, I felt that way too. I thought that was very, but nonetheless, it may be time to review that, because I do not think that we ought to be granting some places and not others. But on this particular one, I do think the topography probably has so many constraints on it that it would make it very difficult to.
One comment. Whatever the...
Whatever, whatever the decision that we make does not necessarily need to be based upon the fact that they, that they do not have a market for a $400,000 house or a $200,000 house.
Right.
That's not, that's not, that's not even the issue. The issue is whether or not we believe that times have changed enough for us to go back and revisit some of the things that we did four, five years ago.
Exactly.
I totally agree with Marcia in the fact that, that Emily, you had no choice but to present the way you presented. So, and I appreciate that. That's not, uh, don't, don't misunderstand anything that we've said or anybody else has said up here. But, but it's not, you know, it, it really doesn't make any difference to me whether it's a $400,000 house or a $700,000 house or whatever it is. You guys have got to meet your market. You've got to sell, you've got to design a product that will sell. You need to anyway. They didn't. And, uh, I can support this. I, you know, we're sitting here, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's not a, it's not 100%. And it's certainly not a situation that is, makes any of us, I don't think, too particularly comfortable. But looking at the project, looking at where it is, looking at the things that are going on overall in the city, uh, I can support the, uh, the rezoning and the modi, and the modifications to the standards then.
All right. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, then all in favor of the amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, we've got one known, Ms. Allen. Then we're back to the main motion. Any other discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. All right, item number 12. Breezeway subdivision site plan, section three, revision one. A 118,992 square foot elementary school on 22.62 acres located in the northwest corner of Clovercroft and Bay Hill Circle.
Mr. Chairman, before Emily begins her presentation, I would like to say that we did receive the traffic study and that the, I, the most of the items on Clovercroft Road at the school access are on the site plan. The only item not on the site plan is the school 20 mile an hour sign, which I'm sure they would do as a matter of course. Um, they are also agreeing to install the traffic light at Wilson Pike and Clovercroft, and to install the traffic light at Wilson Pike and McEwen. The rest of the items would be items that the city would consider as they look at the funds given to us by the school district.
Okay, all right. Is there any one in the audience, an applicant that wants to speak to this item?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Sil Dennis Gallagher. I still reside at 521 Federal Street in Breezeway, unless my wife has sold our home in the last half hour. Is it possible to bring up the site plan? Yes, thank you. There is, uh, on the site plan, which we'll see in a moment, a, uh, ingress and egress point on the, uh, the northeast corner of the property, which exits onto Herbert Drive, which is a, a drive in the Breezeway subdivision. There had been some discussion at earlier committee meetings and BOMA meetings, um, by Mr. Fortney and others regarding the installation of a crash, crash gate, um, at that, uh, at that point to ensure that it did not become a, uh, major thoroughfare in another point of ingress and egress, um, that would bring traffic through the development. Uh, so I would respectfully request that the site plan be amended to erect a crash gate at that point. Um, having not seen this, uh, site plan previous to this evening, uh, I am very interested in the landscaping elements of the plan, particularly berm and, uh, trees, uh, that would, uh, screen the school from those of us who live in the development. Uh, I'd like the applicant, uh, to address the, uh, amount of landscaping and the berm that would be erected on this property. I've driven by the Prairie Creek School that's recently been opened in West Haven, and there is a berm, uh, that separates that school, um, from the main roadway in West Haven. Uh, I would like the applicant to address, pardon me, I'd like the applicant to address the plan for, uh, lighting in the, uh, in the school, particularly what lights will be left on overnight. I have no desire to live next to a Walmart parking lot. Um, in the, uh, front, it's actually unfortunately not, uh, not on this, this plan, but you can see, you can perhaps see Bay Hill Circle in the bottom right corner of this, uh, of this plan. And you can see perhaps that that is an, uh, ingress and egress point for Breezeway. What you can't see is the right hand portion of that semicircle. You can only see the left hand portion of that semicircle. Um, uh, right now, the right hand portion of the semicircle that is not included on the site plan does not provide for, uh, exit onto Clovercroft Road. Uh, I would like the site plan to document that that, um, that, uh, remain as it currently exists, that that not become, um, uh, another, uh, egress and ingress point that could be used by parents dropping off their children at school who seek to avoid the planned, um, traffic pattern in the school. I'm, I'm concerned, and others in the neighborhood are concerned, that if, if that semicircle is open on both ends to Clovercroft, parents merely have to drive along Clovercroft, pull into that semicircle and drop off their children who can walk across the street into the school. Um, and with respect to the, uh, traffic study, I was able to obtain a copy of that, uh, and I would like the applicant to address why it is that the assumption in the traffic study was made that the school would open in the fall of 2012 rather than the applicant's stated intent to open the school in 2011. I'm wondering if the assumptions that are made is that the road improvements will occur in a two-year period of time, when in fact the school is planned to be opened in a one year period of time. Thank you for your time.
I'm Catherine Walsh, and I live at 111 Bay Hill Circle, and I would like the applicant to address, uh, bells and buzzers during that time. That, the noise would be a nuisance to the neighborhood if we heard bells and buzzers all the time. Um, second is the road improvements. Again, I wonder if they are going to be done prior to the school opening? Um, if they are, since it is a highly gridlocked area, how are they gonna accommodate traffic during this time for people to get to and from work? Uh, and of course, anywhere else they need to go. Um, and if it's not going to be done before the school is built, I wonder what assurances there are that it will be, um, the road construction or the improvements will be made. Uh, the next is school traffic times. I would like the applicant to address that, um, well, it's been stated that traffic would only impact our area one half hour before school and one half hour after school, or in the afternoon. Uh, but there are other programs. There's the fore and after school programs, there's scouting programs, of course, there's all the staff that come, the maintenance, the teachers, the cafeteria. So I wonder during traffic times, is there a means to control the traffic other than the traffic light that they, or not traffic light, but I wonder if there's going to be traffic guards? Um, the next is construction hours. I wonder what is the city ordinance regarding when construction can start in, in a day, end in a day, and what is it, can they work on weekends? Is what I'm wondering. Uh, and then the access road again. My house is completely, the access road goes behind my house. It will come down past the side of my house and it will go, not the access road. If the access road is left open, traffic can come behind my house, down the side of my house, in front of my house. I will, I will be gridlocked in my house and not be able to exit. So I would really like the access road to be closed. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Dillard, and we're building at 522 Federal Street. And I too would like the access road blocked off so the prevention of traffic won't come through our neighborhood. I do have two young children who will be attending the school, and I'm wondering if there's gonna be access points for them or a controlled gate access so they can walk to school or ride their bikes? If that could be addressed, that'd be great. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, is there someone here to represent the applicant?
Thank you very much. Again, my name is Enoch Gerald with Holson Steel Engineering. Um, I'm gonna address some of the items that the, um, homeowners brought up, and some I let Mr. Kevin Fortney and also Mr. Rich Phillips prepare the traffic study. Um, and answer any questions you may have. I call it all the questions or not. Um, regarding the buffers, the landscape plan, I mean, we're, um, we've got a 75-foot buffer that's required around the entire perimeter, which we have. The landscape sheet is, was in your package towards the rear, but I think we've got over 500 trees proposed and about 1,500 shrubs. There's quite a extensive landscaping, uh, for the site. Um, there's not a berm to be, be installed, and, and the reason is the school site is gonna be higher than Clovercroft or the homes on, on Bay Hill. Uh, the landscaping will be at the top of the slopes, but there's really not enough room for a berm, for berm in these, in these areas, just through the photography on the site. Um, the lighting, uh, Kevin may know more about the specifics of that, but, um, the playground, there, there is no, um, like you said before, ball field, the lighting in ball fields and things like that. You know, the playground is to the west side of the site, not behind the, behind the homes. Um, there would be some nominal lighting left on around the school building itself, but I don't think the park standards are lit up at night. Um, let's see if I've got them all. Uh, the roadway improvements, Kevin, maybe you wanna address the tiny on some of that stuff too. Um, just trying to think of anything else from an engineering standpoint.
What about the crash gate at the, that private?
We're not opposed to all that at all. I mean, Kevin, can I address that? I don't think we're opposed to that at all. It's really up to the, to the commission.
Good evening. Again, I'm Kevin Fortney with Williamson County Schools. So I try to address these as best I can and, and, uh, try to get some clarification for you. Uh, with regard to the landscaping, as Mr. Gerald has already stated, we're conforming to the design criteria and the requirements of the city of Franklin. There is extensive landscape around the site. We're maintaining the buffers. We're maintaining the density of landscaping that the city has desired in their design, you know, in their design criteria. Uh, I want to address traffic. With regard to traffic, our entrances are aligning with Chardonnay Trace at the entrance, you know, line that up on Clovercroft. It's our goal to have those marked as the auto and car drop off entrances and also the bus entrances. As I said before, we've got the buses that'll go to the west of the site. Auto cars or automobile traffic will go to the, the front of the school building around into the back and then back out, and it's our goal to have everybody going out on Clovercroft. Okay? With regard to the road at, uh, Herbert Drive, in our early stages, we talked to staff members, and it's been a back and forth discussion. Uh, and connectivity has always been a desire. Uh, 99% of the time on all of our buildings, we get asked, can you provide, provide connectivity to the neighborhoods? One is to keep, uh, children from having to go out on the main highway. It gives them access to the school, it gives the community access to the school. That's a point that can be discussed if, if, uh, you know, when we see how traffic flows and so forth, we're not encouraging the use of that access road. So that's something that we'd be open to discussion on, but I could not given it, well, I can give an answer tonight. I think that we could put some barriers in there, you know, and if, I mean, this is being done, that access road, also emergency entrances that the fire department requested. We like to conform with what they've asked us for, because that continues all the way around the site. Of course, I can't prevent somebody from coming in on Bay Hill Circle or any other city street in the city of Franklin. That's something the way traffic flows. But we're gonna do our best, isolate it to the Chardonnay and the, you know, Chardonnay alignment in Clovercroft with our entrances. Lighting on the site, uh, we're looking at lighting that is gonna be low level lightings. We've got an ad alternate in our plans to show that, that is for an LED lighting system. We've provided the photometric plans to the city. We're meeting the requirements of the city of Franklin. No lighting is leaving our site. We have to keep it confined to the inside of our property. That being said, we have no lighting out in the playgrounds. Uh, we have no, uh, big flood lighting that's, that's gonna be going around the building. There are a few security lights. The other thing you need to be aware of, this building was designed in keeping with the new code requirements, that every bit of lighting in the building is on remote occupancy sensors. So it's not a matter that we have now of people leaving a building fully lit or lighted when, when they leave the building in the evening. Uh, we found that to be very beneficial to us from a utility savings standpoint, uh, and, and I think it'll also help us with that lighting concern that neighbors may have. Traffic control and roadway improvements. It's within our contract, uh, in our construction contract to address the roadway improvements at, uh, Chardonnay in the front of the school during the construction. We want that done before we open that building. Uh, there will be some inconveniences during that construction. The contractor will be required to put traffic control measures out there, flagmen and so forth. We have an interlocal agreement with the city of Franklin and a memorandum of understanding with the city of Franklin that we're gonna go ahead and we're gonna put the traffic control devices in at Clovercroft and Wilson Pike. Because it's state and county roads, we have to work the details out with them. However, that'll be, our goal is to get that done before the building opens. In that interlocal agreement, we've also got an understanding with the city that we're gonna be doing the traffic control in a left turn lane northbound Wilson Pike onto McEwen. And that will require some lane widening there to allow for northbound traffic to continue and establish a left turn lane. There are some other funding mechanisms that are in place that the city has worked with the school district, uh, and how they use that, it'll be whatever they can, the city will work that in their future plans and, and traffic control within those areas. Uh, the 20 mile an hour school speed limit, that has, it may have been left off the drawings, but that is a requirement that we have, that we will be slowing that down. We've talked to, uh, staff regarding the requirements of the distances. They want that spaced, and we've agreed to those conditions and distances that they've requested. Long story short, I'm hoping I'm adding, answering the questions, uh, but we have answered and responded and agreed with all conditions that the staff has given us.
Okay.
And then a few.
All right. Is there a, a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Move to the second. Any discussion?
There was one, there was one question on the 2012 assumed design year. What does that?
Yeah, I'll get Rich to handle it, but it...
I'm Richard Phillips, RG Phillips Consulting. I prepared the traffic study. Uh, the, the reason that we assumed the 2012 design year was to be more conservative. Uh, we applied a three and a half percent per year traffic growth to the existing traffic levels that are out there now. So this was done to be more conservative so that there would be more growth in traffic that would occur prior, uh, to the presumed opening of the school, so that it would, um, reflect better in terms of needed roadway improvements.
Okay. You have a question?
Just, uh, uh, thank you for the, the information, and I do want to say that the city of Franklin has lighting standards, and the comment about not, the light not leaving the, the property is certainly in, in keeping with that. Um, on the, uh, on that private road that goes on to Herbert Drive, I understand, uh, that, that emergency vehicles definitely need that, that additional access. And, and, uh, however, in some other places, we have provided, I, I, we call it a crash gate, but I don't know that that's it. But, but something to keep just regular vehicles from, from making that their entrance or exit, because as was stated, the school, I believe, wants everything to come off of Clovercroft and fit, fit around.
That's our design.
Yes, yes, and, and...
I don't have a problem to installing, you know, removable bollards that, uh, the fire chief here or the... chief here or the fire marshal here would agree to. I don't have a problem with that, and that'll satisfy the folks, and then they'll come back when they want them down to access the school, I guess, but...
Well, but that would be a way to handle it.
That'd be a neighborhood issue.
Okay, I will make a motion to add that.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Move to second on the amendment to the motion. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it with Mr. Gamble voting no. All right, then we're back to the main motion.
Okay.
Any other discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. You want to say something else?
If I could make a comment, I want to take a moment just to thank the staff members in planning, codes, fire chief's office, and the assistance that they gave us on the project. It was one that people were able to sit around the table and discuss openly and put feelings and matters aside, and in the long run, we're all meeting the needs of children within our county, whether they live in the City of Franklin, whether they live in Brentwood, Nolansville, or out in the county. So I just wanted to thank everybody. I want to thank Eric Stuckey and everybody that facilitated this. Thank you.
Well, I guess we ought to say on the other side that this, although the traffic still is of concern to me, I think that a good faith effort has been made to do the best that can be done under the circumstances, and many of us appreciate that.
We do. All right, see, item number 18 was pulled from the consent, Ranco Farms subdivision, final flat, revision two, lot two, two lots on 1.27 acres located at 3775 Mallory Lane. Okay? Anybody in the audience other than the applicant that want to speak to this item? Seeing none, is there someone representing the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Randy Harper with Perry Engineering, representing the applicant. We also have the land surveyor, Mr. Brian Reichschneider of Blue Ridge Land Surveying here. Would be glad to answer any questions. It's a two-lot flat. We've also presented a site plan to be administratively approved in connection with this project on the corner lot, and like I said, Brian's here to answer any surveying questions and be glad to answer any other questions anybody has.
Okay, well, let's get a motion, and then we'll have a discussion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay, move to discuss, move to second, any discussion?
And my concern is, the comment was made about the floodway and floodway fringe, and I noticed that they said that you would need to change some of the notation here, and that was my, well, that was my concern for two reasons, because it shows floodway and then it shows flood, 100-year flood zone as being two different areas there, and I'm assuming that's something that can be worked out with the staff.
Yeah, we're in agreement with the staff comments on that. We just didn't have enough time to meet that. They required buying a GIS tile from the city, and it just wasn't able to get on the plan, so...
Okay, well, the other thing goes along with, what happened there in May?
What happened?
What happened to this piece of property during the May flood?
I'm not sure. We're on the other corner away from the creek, so that will still be vacant, a vacant lot at this point.
Okay, well, just right across from there, though some other developed areas did have a problem that we had not expected them to have, like with the, that's the reason I went, but really...
Sure. The lot we're carving out is in Zone X. It's outside the 500-year flood zone.
Okay, that was it.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Move on to item number 20, approval of the 2010 major thoroughfare plan update.
Hello.
Let's see, should we start with staff? Do you have anything to say?
My staff.
That's staff.
I'm your staffer, too. I'd like to introduce Mr. Aaron Gardner, and he will discuss the major thoroughfare plan.
We'll try to keep it brief. This is the update to the, the last update was in 2004 to the major thoroughfare plan. Back at that time, the staff and board, planning commission, had decided to try to do an update every four or five years, and we started this process last year. Have gone through multiple public hearings, a couple of board work sessions, and at this point, we've gotten to a place where we can bring it to the planning commission for approval. I'd like to point out, on some of the projects, the board mostly talked about the projects that were listed in the major thoroughfare plan. Of the projects that were listed, number 40 and number 56, both of those were recommended by the board to be removed from the list. They are still in the plan if you choose to take them out or you can keep them in there, but just wanted to let you know what the board's recommendation on those were. Those are Franklin Road from Herbert Industrial Drive to Mack Hatcher and Lewisburg Pike from south margin to Mack Hatcher.
Being widened.
Being widened, yes, ma'am. The basis from staff and, I forgot to mention, this is Brad Thompson. He's with Wilbur Smith. He worked on the major thoroughfare plan, but the basis for adding those projects in to the recommendation were that they were all based on modeling, you know, none of the factors that were included other than just engineering, connectivity, and that type of thing. So if you did choose to remove those, there's always a possibility that there may be some other improvements that may be necessary other places. As an example, Mack Hatcher in the major thoroughfare plan is proposed to be four lanes all the way around. It's possible that by keeping Franklin Road and Lewisburg two lanes, maybe, it may be necessary in the future that Mack Hatcher would need to be six lanes in the future, but like I said, the whole purpose on it was based on the modeling, why staff left it in there, and just wanted to point that out to you. Oh, yeah. I did want to point out one other thing, and this is something that we just noticed in the past few days, but Market Street was extended, or there was an appendix to the last update a couple of years ago to extend Market Street, and that's over in McKay's Mill area, and it was proposed to extend to Highway 96, and somehow it was left out of this last project list. But if you did move forward with approving the major thoroughfare plan, would ask that you would go ahead and make the recommendation to also include the Market Street extension in the plan. And if y'all have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. Brad will be here also.
What's the specifics of the Market Street? Is it two lanes?
It is. It's a, it's a, it's a north-south connector basically between Clovercroft and 96.
Okay. All right, is there a motion?
Well, I'll make the motion that we consider this at the next meeting. It, you know, I thought that there would probably be a presentation that's been done right here, but very honestly, I read, I read through a good bit of this, but in there I have some specific questions, but I don't really necessarily want to get into them tonight about some specific things, but, you know, it's a pretty big document, and they really have a lot more than what was given to us whenever we were looking at before. So I just say, could we defer the vote on it until next meeting?
I'll second it.
And in the meantime, get the Market Street extension.
Right, and, you know, and there are a couple of other things that I might want to say to you privately, but one of them is that my name has been misspelled all over. That's not, that's not the reason I'm saying it. That's not the reason I'm saying it.
All right, well, there is a motion then, and seconded, to defer for 30 days or till the September meeting.
To the next meeting, to the next, to the next meeting.
Do we want to have, I guess, discuss it more specifically during the workshop and then discuss it afterward?
If we could, if we could, that would be excellent. That would be excellent.
So you want to put on the workshop before the meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
If we could, that would be very good. Thank you.
And if y'all have any, if y'all have any comments or questions, please feel free to go, I mean, you can email them to me. We can go ahead and, we can meet and talk about it, just, you know, so we can go ahead and get this taken care of, because like I said, we tried to get this started last year, so we'd like to get it approved.
Can we ask everyone to keep their copies of the stuff?
Right. We don't need a copy. We don't need a copy. We've got a copy, so...
I might need one. I have a couple of time and a half.
We should be responsible for taking our copies.
All right. Any other discussion with the motion to defer? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. All right, last item is ordinance 2009-54 to be entitled an ordinance to amend Table 3-2, permitted uses in the Franklin zoning ordinance to permit vehicle sales and rental in the heavy industrial zoning district.
Mr. Chairman, this is a zoning text amendment that has already been passed by the planning commission and then BOMA. However, BOMA did add a condition onto this text amendment that was passed stating that no car sales should take place, or no car, I guess they are car sales, should take place within 200 feet of a residential district. We are bringing it back to you as a matter of you being aware of the change that was made by BOMA and accepting that change in a vote this evening.
Okay. All right, is there a motion?
I move that we change to the amended language.
Okay. Move to second, any discussion?
Would this create any nonconforming car sites currently?
If it's nonconforming, it doesn't matter.
I would just...
You see what I mean?
Yeah.
Isn't that right? It's already there.
Unless it gets flooded out.
That's correct.
Yep.
The right, nonconforming, nonconforming can go back if it's non-residential.
Only nonconforming change would be if the zoning district was changing from one district to another. If it wasn't permitted, this is going, this is expanding.
Right. It's currently, it was currently permitted in the lower industrial. Now it's permitted also in the higher industrial.
Okay. All right, any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Your motion for adjournment?
Some move? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.